My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We'll begin today with a welcome to everyone who's here for our budget hearing, which will be the first order of business. I will tell you that our superintendent has been excused today. Ms. Dugan will be acting in his place. And we'll begin then with Mr. McDowell, who will take us through the budget hearing.
Okay, so I think this is the final speech for us, right?
Yes.
So it's going to be a quick six slide presentation. Our first proposition is our main proposition. It is our budget, approximately $106 million for next year. It represents a 3.7% increase in total, about a 3.7% or $3.7 million increase in dollars. It sustains all of our programs, the staff we have today, the staff we'll have tomorrow, and the staff we'll have next year. We're looking to go out at a 3.95% rate, which is about 1% lower than our actual tax cap. Very comfortable with the actual dollar amount, and I'm excited to propose this to our board and community. Our three-part budget. We are composed of three components. The first component, 8% of what we do is our administration, it's myself, it's Miss Danza, it's Mr. Roses, and Ms. Dugan, the superintendent. Very consistent with prior years, so we really haven't changed much in regards to what our administrative component costs. I always say to Ms. Dugan that she's the most expensive person I know because our program component is 75% of what we do. So is that consistent with last year? It is. We spent about $80 million on our children, to transport them, to educate them, for the athletics and all of their extracurriculars. This is consistent with what we've done in the past, and obviously, since we're not removing or changing any programs, it should be consistent with what we're going to do in the future. Then our capital component comprises about 17% of what we do and how we spend. And ironically, if you've gone to the high school or the middle school or Pinehurst in the last few years, you know that we are in the middle of a major capital project. And I hope all of you have at least had a chance to experience it and see what our beautiful fields and buildings will look like. And guess what? We still have the high school built. And then we finish up with Pinehurst. When you look at the capital component, that's slightly higher than what it's been in the past. And why is that? Because we've got $1.5 million of debt service debt that will be part of our budget next year. And we knew that was coming, and that's part of what makes our tax rate slightly higher than what it's been in the past. So how do we pay for all of this? Our revenue side, 46% of what we do is paid by all of you. And we really appreciate it because that's how our program thrives. 45% of it comes from the state, and then another 9% of it comes from other revenue and from appropriated fund balance. So total, a budget of about $106 million. Proposition number two. Anyone have an electric car around here? Guess what? We'll all have one in ten years. Proposition number two is for our buses. $785,000 approximately for five to six of our large buses. Our current buses now cost about $150K. In five to 10 years, that will be $500,000 because they'll all be electric. We feel we need about five or six new ones to maintain our fleet and to continue to have the seven-year turnover period that we have consistently had here for a while. So about $780,000 for proposition number two. And it's broken down by this list here. We have 84 buses, 54 are large, nine are 35-passenger, then we have 11 vans and 10 wheelchair buses. We have had to change the dynamic of what our bus fleet looks like because our children and their needs have changed. So as your needs change, as we order, those change also. The last proposition is a $2.5 million proposition, and it is for us, if we have a surplus, to allocate money there. Any of you heard any news about what's happened in Hamburg? What's happened with your part with the capital project? It's not going to happen till this point here. So the proposition here is to fund up to $2.5 million of a reserve to help us with any overages or any bid uncertainties we have with the capital project. So again, our goal is to not worry about next year, but worry about three years from now and to make sure we don't have to go back to our taxpayers and ask for more money. So if we have a surplus, we would like to fund it up to $2.5 million to help us with any concerns with the capital project. Any questions?
All right, at this time, if any of the audience folks would like to ask a question or make a comment, please come to the podium and do so. Come on up.
Different one.
Oh, okay. Any questions on the budget proposal? Just so you know, the business office, Mr. McDowell, the cabinet, and the superintendent have worked on this budget since October. So we've had many presentations, not only here, but also in finance and budget. And we thank you for all the work you've done. I know it started at a 7.2% tax increase, and we were able to modify it to get it down to what we feel is reasonable. 3.95%, 2% or more of that is due to the capital project, which was mentioned when we asked for people to vote on it. So we're happy at this point that we're in a good place, and we're looking not only at the short term, but the long term for financial stability for the district. So if there are no further comments or questions, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn from the budget hearing so we can get into our regular meeting. Mr. Diplock and Mr. Kilpoint on the second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, we will go right into the adoption of the regular agenda. We did not have an executive session this evening, so I have nothing to report on that. Are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda by our acting superintendent or the board members? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Mr. Voto, second.
Second.
Mr. Boyle on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, we are now at privilege of the floor. This is not an open meeting law right, nor is it a question and answer period. Privilege of the floor is an opportunity that the board provides to interested citizens to state their concerns and/or comments on district operations and activities. This is the procedure during our meeting. When I ask if anyone wishes to speak, you may proceed to the podium in the front of the room. A privilege of the floor card must be fully completed and handed to the district clerk, Shannon Press, who is at the table there. In addressing your question or comment to the board, we respectfully ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less and not mention the names of individuals or any titles that point to a specific individual. Where appropriate, the board or administration will follow up with a reply. If anyone here wanting to address the board, please come forward.
All right. Hello. I want to start by saying thank you, that is, for this opportunity to speak and for my voice to be heard. My name is William Miggas. I am the current junior class president and the student government president elected for the 2024-2025 school year. I'm here today regarding the scheduling plan for next year. From the limited information available, it is to my understanding that this school wishes to move to an A/B schedule next year, shortening lunches and pushing the start time back by 15 minutes. I understand the reason behind this decision, but I also need you to hear the student body. I have here in my hand about 20 pages of student testimonies explaining the negative impacts this schedule will have on them. This is here, if any of you would like to see it. I can also email it, as I would hate to use hundreds of sheets of paper to print it out. If I had an hour, I might be able to read all of these. But while I have this privilege of standing here now, I will shine light on the biggest issues I have uncovered from students, teachers, as well as students from other schools that have a shortened lunch. To begin, the academically achieving portion of the school will be hurt. The option to take elective classes will be minimized due to the A/B scheduling. This includes AP and SUNY classes, which often are singleton-period classes. How can students that want to take a class take it if their A schedule doesn't line up with the B-schedule class? I've spoken to many students and teachers who all agree enrollment in these programs will be demolished. Next, the music program will be damaged. I am proud to be a part of the FHS's phenomenal band program, which stands out even amongst other high schools. Sadly, the trend leading out of COVID is less musicians making it to high school. To put it bluntly, more kids are quitting. Looking at this excellent music program run by veteran teachers who are extremely passionate and capable makes me wonder why this is. It certainly isn't because the band is bad. Our music department has claimed the highest ranking at festivals the last few years. It would be no stretch to say it is one of the most highly achieving programs at Frontier. But when faced with this new lunch program, students are tasked with choosing music classes for or their electives for their future. Why should the music program, which is so successful, be forced into an area where their enrollment decreases because students can't drop their lunch? Not to mention the hassle for teachers and students for the lesson program. 20 or 30 minutes will not be enough to have a lesson, which limits the periods to non-lunch periods, meaning the frequency that a student will miss the same class will be increased each week, hurting their academics. Next, lunch lines takes upwards of 15 minutes to finish passing out food. While the lunching staff at Frontier is trying so hard, there is a limit to what they can do. The schedule will put them at a heightened speed serving food and exhaust them, and it still may not be enough time. The time to eat is then shorter than the 30 minutes that is planned. And the people who don't drop their lunch but still use that time to meet with other teachers to get extra help will be denied that time. These are just a few of the issues that I have heard. As I said, the rest are in this document, so I ask you all, please reconsider this decision. An alternative position I have is adopting a system like Orchard Park's Opens. These are free periods similar to study halls where students are allowed to travel to where they need to be, if that is the cafeteria for lunch, to see a teacher for extra help, to go to a music lesson, or just to simply have a brain break during the day. I'm not asking you to allow us to leave the building as they do at Orchard Park. However, I think that instead of shortening lunches and putting us on a blocked schedule, this plan is more feasible. Another option is to leave the schedules as they are, at least for a few more years, until all the people that are accustomed to being able to drop their lunch and have the opportunities that I have had at Frontier to do that. There was a petition, I would like to add. I'm not sure if it made it to the board or was shut down over time, but this petition in protest to this change received almost 300 signatures, in case you're wondering if it's just me and my 20 pages. A final point I want to add is that with the multiple schedules going on at the same time, there will be bells going off frequently and kids in the halls at all times with this schedule. That could be a major disruption, and it will be difficult to determine who's messing around and who actually needs to be moving throughout the halls. I understand that seat night time needs to be increased. I understand that the busing is short-staffed. However, I also understand that it's my duty to make the student body at Frontier heard. Many here in the school fear that their education, as they move forward towards college, will be stunted if they are not able to take the classes they need for their majors, get some decompression time, or have that extra time to study. I want to thank you all again for all the hard work you do for our school that I'm very proud to attend. My last statement is that I simply wish others to have the same opportunities I had. This isn't about me or any single person, but simply to the benefit of the following classes once I am gone. Thank you, and please reconsider.
Thank you, Bill, and congratulations on your reelection for the presidency next year. What we could do, would you see Mrs. Cross there? And give her, she'll give you an email address, and the superintendent or one of the cabinet members will get back to you, okay?
Yep.
And if you send that to BOEgroup@frontiercsd.org, we will all get it.
All right. Thank you.
And any of the questions that you mentioned, make sure that that's in the email as well, so we can answer all of those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me this privilege to speak today. My name is Julia Tukon. I'm a senior. And I, I'm speaking on the same topic as well. I've never had a lunch. And personally, I've loved every minute of it. I've taken five AP classes, French up until last year, and only 10 music classes. I say only because I wish I could be in band in music theory this year, but due to my schedule, I can't. I do both these programs at the zoo, and it takes up six out of my nine periods. The three that I have left being chorus, AP bio, and gym. I'm incredibly fortunate in the fact that I know exactly what I want to do as an adult, and I know what I need to do to get there. But that doesn't mitigate the fact that right now, with our current schedule, I can't even take the classes I want to. I'm not in band, theory four, or French. I can't imagine all of the sacrifices I would have to make if I were a student next year. I'm fully aware that this change will not affect me, but it will affect my friends, my family, my peers, my school, my music department, my home. The inability to drop a lunch would destroy my schedule if I were a student, and frankly, my mental health. My packed schedule isn't the only reason I drop a lunch. I have an anxiety disorder, and the root of that disorder is eating around others. I cannot imagine being forced to sit in a stuffy cafeteria every day for 30 minutes. I would shut down. Anyone here that knows me knows that I'm a bit of a talker. And if I had to sit and lunch every day, I wouldn't talk. I probably wouldn't be able to move. But if I was forced into a lunch period, there would be a high likelihood that I would move schools. I talked to my mom about this, and she agrees. That's not something that I say lightly. I have said countless times that FHS is my favorite place in the entire world. I know that that might be an odd thing to hear from a high school student, but it is absolutely true. There's nowhere that I feel more at home. And that is because of all of the opportunities that I have at Frontier, all of my options and all of the classes that I've taken. I, oh, I didn't think it was going to be emotional. Jeez. I am an incredibly fortunate student. I went to NASA last year. I've had so many opportunities, and I would not be able to do that if I had a lunch. Sorry. Thank you so much for your time, but please reconsider.
Can you also share your email with all of us and with Mrs. Cross so the superintendent will see it as well? And we thank you for all of you, both of you who have spoken with us. Your input is certainly valued by all of us. Okay. 6.1, looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Kilpoint, second.
Second.
Mr. Boyle, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Takes us to 7.1, our top 10 students. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Frontier Board of Education proudly commends the top 10 seniors of the class of 2024. Valedictorian Nathan Hull, Courtney Kaprevich, salutatorian Olivia Wass, number three, Liam Griffin, number four, Haley Korzinski, number five, Samantha Bella, number six, Nicholas Shea, number seven, Ray Schwartzkopf, number eight, Julian Locker, number nine, and Grace Gorsika, number 10. May have a motion. Mr. Diplock, second.
Second.
Mr. Cordier on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. If those seniors are here, please come forward. Mr. Charlin, Mrs. Dugan, would you hand out our certificates? Students, come on up. And we will be taking a picture, but we're going right now to the principal, Mr. Charlin.
All right, let's see if the top 10 can figure out where to go. Where do you want us? All right, so we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about you folks, and I know not everyone was able to make it. But we are going to take the time to read a little bit of a summary of just some of the accomplishments for these students. And then obviously, we would like to get their photo. Parents, I would like to congratulate you as well. I know this has been a long time coming. Certainly a lot of stress on your part as well to get where they arrived today. This is a sort of a culmination in the hard work of not just you guys, but everyone in this room. This is the end. This is what we hope for as educators, a chance to see the hours that we have put in, that you have put in. Congratulations to you all. Truthfully, I say this to you in October when I call you down. I don't know how you do it. I actually was talking to my son earlier before I came to the board meeting, and he said, "Dad, what are you doing tonight?" And I said, "I'm talking about the top 10." And my son is in sixth grade. He's my oldest, and he said, "What's that?" And so I showed him the presentation that I have, and he said, "Wait a minute. You're telling me that they have a GPA of..." "...dot-dot-dot?" And I said, "Yeah." He goes, "You got to be kidding me." And I said, "No, I'm not kidding you." "Dad, how is that even possible?" Said, "It's not possible for you." Just kidding. It is possible for, it is possible for him. But really, what it shows is how unique and special and just incredible what you've accomplished is. So we're going to follow the order that is in the Board of Education agenda, and we will start tonight with Nathan Hull, ranked first with a GPA of 100.40, earning the honor to serve as the valedictorian this year. Nathan is an academic high honor roll student, a member of the National Honor Society, taking AP courses, BC calculus, chemistry, literature, statistics, world history, US government and politics, dual enrollment courses in college physics, English 101 and Spanish 5. Nathan, if I left anything out, please let me know. He is president of the student government, secretary for the National Honor Society, and student ex officio of the Board of Education. A six-year varsity soccer starter, large school all-Western New York athlete, all-Western New York scholar athlete, two-time first-team ECIC, two-time team MVP, two-time second-team ECIC, four-year captain. And besides just those things, he's a member of chemistry club, ecology club, robotics club, Spanish club. In addition to all this, I believe Nathan is also employed at O'Brien's West End. And his future plans include attending Syracuse University, where he will be pursuing a degree in engineering. Congratulations, Nathan.
Nathan, before you go back to your state, would you introduce anyone who came with you tonight?
I have both my parents and my little brother here, Jamie, Robert, and Brayden.
Congratulations to all of you.
I would like to now introduce Courtney Kaprevich, ranked second in the class with a GPA of 100.04, earning the honor to serve as our salutatorian this year. Courtney is an academic high honor roll student, a member of the National Honor Society and Tri-M Music Honor Society. She has immersed herself in AP courses such as BC calculus, computer science A, computer science principles, and statistics. She has also taken college physics and pre-calculus. In addition to her academics, Courtney serves as the treasurer for both the music club and student government and is also a member of the programming computer club. Courtney plays the violin and is a member of Frontier Symphonic Orchestra. Outside of school, Courtney volunteers at St. Mary of the Lake Parish in Hamburg and at the Orchard Park Fire Department. In her free time, Courtney works, free time, in her free time, Courtney works at Bray Miller Market as a floor manager and is also a soccer official for Lakeview Athletics. In the fall, Courtney will be majoring in statistics and data science at Robert Morris University. Congratulations, Courtney. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Courtney, who did you bring tonight?
I came here with my mother, Diana, my father, Scott, and then my grandmother, Pat.
Congratulations to the family.
I would like to now introduce Olivia Wass, ranked third in her class with a GPA of 99.62. Olivia is an academic high honor roll student, a member and secretary of both the National Honor Society and the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Olivia has immersed herself in her academics, taking AP courses in biology, governance, literature, statistics, US history, and world history, as well as taking dual enrollment courses in pre-calculus and English 101, as well as French 5 through SUNY Erie. Olivia is a member of the band club, chorus club, the drama music club, French club, as well as the pep band. She is the president of the fact club, secretary of the German club, and treasurer of the literacy club. Her talents on the bassoon has afforded her the opportunity to play in the wind ensemble, symphonic orchestra, NISMA Conference Allstate, and the Southtowns Youth Orchestra. Outside of school, Olivia is a member of the Girl Scouts of the USA and volunteers at St. John Paul II Parish in Lakeview. All of this while working as a hostess at the public house on the lake. Olivia plans to study biology pre-med at the University of Buffalo in the fall. Congratulations, Olivia.
Congratulations.
And will you introduce?
I came here with my mother, Sherry, and my father, Tony. Anthony.
Okay, I don't think Liam Griffin was able to join us this evening. However, Liam should certainly get his time to be recognized. Liam Griffin, folks, ranked fourth in his class with a 99.27 GPA. Liam is a high honor roll student, as well as a member of the National Honor Society, taking numerous AP classes, which includes Biology, Calculus BC, Computer Science A, Computer Science Principles, as well as, as well as college courses in Physics and Accelerated Precalculus. Liam is a member of the Outdoor Track Team, throwing discus and shot put. He has volunteered an impressive 200 hours with the Frontier National Honor Society, as well as the Hamburg Guest Programs. In addition to his academic and volunteering efforts, Liam is currently doing Instacart for Wegmans. Liam plans on attending the University at Buffalo to major in Mechanical Engineering.
Does Liam send a representative to pick up his certificate or not?
I don't think anyone is here, but we will, I can bring those back to the building to make sure that you watch baseball. Moving on, I'd like to, I don't think Haley was able to join us tonight. Haley Korzinski, ranked fifth in her class with a 99.27 GPA. Haley is a high honor roll student, as well as a member of the National Honor Society and the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Her college course credits include College Physics, English 101, as well as Pre-Calc. Her AP classes include Calculus AB, Literature and Composition, as well as World History. Haley plays the violin and is a member of the Frontier High School Symphonic Orchestra, as well as tutoring the elementary orchestra students during their lessons. Haley is a dancer at Elements Dance Center, where she also is an assistant dance teacher. She is a certified babysitter and is a retail sales associate at Colly's Pool Store. Haley will be attending the State University of New York at Fredonia and will be majoring in Early Childhood Education with a minor in Dance. Congratulations, Haley.
Excuse me, sir. I'll take that for her grandmother.
Oh, really?
And her grandmother.
Oh, congratulations and tribute.
Appreciate it. Please extend your congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, on behalf of her.
I'll shake her hand in school.
How are you?
Rob's going in for the hug.
We don't get hugs.
You want to get hugs, thank you.
Not for Rob.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rob.
Old friend.
I would like to now introduce you to Samantha Bella, ranked sixth in her class with a 99.07 GPA. Samantha is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Tri-M Music Honor Society, taking Advanced Placement Biology, as well as college-level French. Samantha is the section leader for violas in Frontier High School Symphonic Orchestra and String Orchestra. She is the secretary of the Adventure Club and vice president of the Peer Tutoring Club, as well as a member of the Frontier Mentoring Club. Samantha was awarded the Student of the Month and the Academic and Cultural Excellence Award from the Frontier World Languages Department. She was also awarded the Certificate of Commendation by the Frontier Board of Education for a first-place finish in the Western New York Brain Beat. In addition, Samantha was awarded the Robert Insalaco Youth Award by Erie County Deputy Sheriff's Badge and Shield Club and the Erie County Sheriff's Office for saving her father's life. Samantha volunteers at the Buffalo Science Museum, the Buffalo Zoo, and the Springville Veterinary Clinic. Samantha's postgraduate plans are to attend the University of Buffalo, majoring in Biomedical Sciences. Congratulations, Samantha.
Amazing work.
Samantha, will you introduce the people who came with you tonight?
My mom, my sister.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Nicholas Shea, ranked seventh in his class with a 99.05 GPA. Nicholas is a National Honor Society member and is the senior class president. Nicholas has immersed himself in taking AP courses in Calc BC, Chemistry, Computer Science A, Government, Statistics, US History, World History, and College Physics. In addition to his academics, Nicholas has been a member and captain of both the Frontier Varsity Baseball and Frontier Varsity Football Teams, as well as a member of the Frontier JV Basketball Team. Nicholas is a member of the Chemistry Club, the Computer Programming Club, the Varsity Club, as well as playing the trumpet in the Frontier Wind Ensemble. In Nicholas's free time, he volunteers with the Hamburg Guest Program and currently is working at Jersey Mike's. All right. In the fall, Nicholas is attending Syracuse University, majoring in Aerospace Engineering. Congratulations.
I hope so. Congratulations, Galati.
Will you introduce? Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, Grace Schwarzkopf, who couldn't be here tonight, ranked eighth in her class with a 98.91 GPA. Grace is an academic high honor roll student, member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Tri-M Music Honor Society, excelling in her academic career, taking AP courses in Calculus, Literature and Composition, as well as US History, as well as college-level courses in English 101, Forensics, Physics, Precalculus, and Spanish 5. Grace is the president and a member of the Mock Trial Team and a member of the Spanish Club, Frontier Music Club, Frontier International Club, as well as a Spanish mentor. Grace also plays the bass for the Frontier Symphonic Orchestra. She has been a member in the Frontier community as a member of the Buffalo Yishin Ryu, I hope I said that right, Yishin Ryu, there's a Y in there that makes it tough, karate, as well as the Girl Scouts of America, the Lakeshore Eclipse Travel Softball Team, and the Western New York Wildcats Softball Team. In addition to all of this, Grace is currently employed at Wegmans. In the fall, she will be majoring in Forensic Science while playing softball for Hilbert College. Congratulations to Grace. At this time, I'd like to recognize Julian Locker, ranked ninth in her class. I don't think Julian was able to join us this evening, with a GPA of 98.7. Julian is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as a high honor roll student, immersing herself in AP Biology, Statistics, Literature, and World History, as well as college-level Calculus and Spanish. In addition to this, she is a member of the Foreign Language Mentoring Club, Spanish Club, Varsity Club, a 12-year member of the West Seneca Magic Softball Association, captain of the Frontier Varsity Softball Team her junior and senior year. In addition to her school activities, Julian volunteers for her church, her church group, as well as the Hamburg Guest Program, all of this while working part-time at Iliod Apolos. Julian will be attending Hofstra University to study Health Science with the goal of becoming a pediatric physician's assistant while playing NCAA Division softball. Congratulations, Courtney. And at this time, I'd like to introduce everybody to Grace Gorsika, ranked 10th in her class with a 98.69 GPA. Grace is an academic high honor roll student, as well as a member of the National Honor Society, immersing herself in AP courses such as Biology, Environmental Science, and AP Literature, as well as Accelerated Precalculus through Hilbert and Statistics through SUNY Erie. In addition to her academics, Grace is also a member of the Ethos Club and the Mock Trial Team. During her free time, Grace is a volunteer with the Hamburg Guest Program and currently has a part-time job at Longboards at the Beach. In the fall, Grace will be attending Canisius University to study Psychology. Congratulations.
I'm a Canisius grad, good luck.
And will you introduce who you brought with you tonight?
I'm with my mom and my dad, Wendy and Greg.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Charlin.
Could we have a photo?
Before you go, I just want to say a few words. Before our students and anyone who wants to take a picture besides our picture out in the hall, we want to thank the parents and the family members for all you've done and sharing your students with us. You're their first teachers. We came in second, and we're very happy to hear about all the wonderful things they've done and will continue to do in the future. So, give yourselves a round of applause as well. At this time, students, if you would go with Mr. Charlin and Ms. Dugan, Ms. Martin will take your picture. And parents, if you want to take a picture or make an early escape, go right ahead.
Lost you 20 bucks, man.
I got the next one.
Don't feel bad, he charges us more.
Yeah, keep the money flowing, right?
I know.
Okay, we will continue. And however, after our top 10, that we honor our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. We have to keep the door open, Ms. Martin, because it's the open meeting law, I know. Result upon, result that the Board of Education proudly recognizes our teachers for the important contributions to the students, staff, and community of the Frontier Central School District in conjunction with National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through 10th, 2024. May have a motion.
So moved, second.
Mr. Kilkwyn, Mr. Diplock. On the question, all in favor? Opposed? Curried. Before I ask Mrs. Jacobowski to come forward to receive her certificate for the members of the teaching staff at Frontier, I just want to extend our thanks for all you do every day, long days. But when you see what our students have accomplished, it's why we all got into this business. So, beat them all on your behalf. So, Lindsay, come on up. Congratulations. Don't go, we need your picture.
Thank you very much.
Well, yes, Mrs. Jacobowski, Mr. Cordier, Mr. Kilkwyn, Mr. Bodo, do I have a picture taken out there? Thank you. At this time, we'll move to 7.3. We have Mr. Gregory Whitman here, our athletic director, who will give us a presentation on the department. Welcome, Mr. Whitman.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I, I have a lot here. Some slides will just be visuals so I can get through them quick. Some I'll slow down and spend a little bit more time with. But I, I do understand it's five to seven minutes, so here we go. Our athletic department staff, it's basically the same, some new faces. This year, Laura Lester came in in the fall as the athletic secretary. Also new is Karen Rawling and Rachel Lewis, who are our new athletic trainers this year, and they have been amazing additions to our staff. The athletic department philosophy is up there. I'm not going to read it all, but I do want to stress the last sentence. "The role of athletics is to prepare our young people for life, relating the rules of the game to the rules of life." There's a correlation. You learn to play the game, you put work in, you get work out. That's how life works as well. Our program goals, I have four program goals. Everything that I do, my work falls within one of these goals. And if it doesn't fall within there, I question, is it something we should be doing? Or do I need a fifth goal? So, like, this drives everything. And just real quickly, athletics will be an integral part of the total educational experience. There will be an emphasis on safety and risk management. The program will promote sound choices concerning healthy lifestyles. And the community will have a positive image of our athletics program, as well as the district as a whole. What I don't ever mention in any of my department goals are wins and losses and championships. I firmly believe if we do these things, those things come. They are a result of these goals, shouldn't be the primary goal. Our teams, that's everything we offer. There's a lot there, that's just a visual. 68 total teams, and I've given you the breakdown, 30 boys' teams, 32 girls' teams, six coed teams. In this past year, you, as the Board of Education, have appointed 123 coaches. And just to give you an idea of, of what that encompasses, 68 teams, we're talking roughly 850 contests every year. So, if you balance that out, you figure 425 home games, which that's 425 games we prep for, we put supervision on for, we have PA announcers for, we have clock operators for, and then somebody tears down for. 425 awake. Four-hundred-and-twenty-five away games, that's four-hundred-and-twenty-five bus runs. And that, with our transportation dilemma that we, not just here at Frontier, has, but across Section Six, that's a challenge. So, you know, the Transportation Department, they're killing themselves trying to accommodate our needs. And it's not unnoticed, and it is certainly appreciated. We're talking about our coaches real quick. These are all the requirements to coach a modified J V or varsity sport in New York State. New York State does not differentiate between a paid coach or an unpaid coach. So if you want to coach, this is what you have to do. Our coaches are highly qualified because of this. I view them and I tell the coaches, there are certifications you have to have. Most of you are getting paid to do this. You are a professional coach. Now, you're not paying your mortgage with the stipend you get, I get it. But there is an expectation that you carry yourself in a certain way, and you do certain things. And obviously, these are our state education department requirements, so there's no getting away from that. But we also have to monitor all this for those hundred-and-twenty-three coaches. So that can be a tall task right there. Some highlights from this past year, teams that had done very well. Our boys volleyball team was Section Six semifinalists this year. Our fall cheerleading team was a Section Six runner-up. Our girls gymnastics team was a Section Six champions. Girls volleyball was Section Six champions. Winter cheerleading was E C I C champions, Section Six champions. They reached the Beach National Champions, and they took fifth place in the New York State Championship. Girls bowling was E C I C champions and Section Six runner-ups. On the individual side of things, we have eight New York State Championships this past year for our individual athletes. Madison Simonelli and Jessica Holtz won a state championship as part of the Section Six Composite Girls Bowling Team. Lily Bogdan, who we hear about quite often, an indoor track, she was champion in the fifteen-hundred meter, state champion, third place in the three thousand. Leah Filleron, she's got multiple accolades there, but she was a New York State champion in the vault. Leeson, she's a New York State champion. Even better than that, these are our scholar-athlete teams. Ninety percent of the team has to have a GPA of ninety percent or higher to qualify as a scholar-athlete team. So you can see the fall teams and the winter teams. The spring numbers aren't available just yet, but I can tell you that so far through fall and winter, all but two of our teams have qualified as scholar-athlete teams. Some initiatives, I'm gonna take a minute on this slide. These are things that we've been working towards this year and last year. We are not where I want us to be yet in some of these, but we're working towards them and we're putting an emphasis on these things. The rosters in e-school, athletic team rosters, now, why is that important? Big deal. Well, the building administration, I noticed it last year and it was a problem, so we corrected it this fall. Assistant principals and principals, they didn't always know who was on our team. So if this was a disciplinary issue, it didn't always get to me, because they just simply didn't know. So with the rosters in e-school, they're able to see, every kid, we put them in, they know whether they're on, and I'm not going to single anybody out, they can tell me, hey, Joe Smith, who's on the badminton team, just got in trouble in the cafeteria. Well, I can go to the badminton coach, we don't have a badminton team. But, you know, we can then go and follow up with that athlete to get that corrected. Coaches can now monitor their athletes a little bit better. In a lot of cases, coaches didn't even know whether their kids were at school or not. So they couldn't check on kids. Kids would come to practice after not being in school. Now, we're going to be able to, coaches will be able to monitor that. And this has come, you know, Carrie Amici's really helped me out a lot with this, so I want to give her some credit. The other thing that coaches will be able to do is monitor, not just the attendance, but also their kids' grades. And that's where the student eligibility piece comes in as well. We can run reports at the five-week mark that will give us that initial red flag. Instead of kids going around with the pink cards initially, they still will do that if they get the red flag. But like, that was a big thing this year with student eligibility, because I will tell you, and I don't say this with pride, but academic eligibility was loose last year. I'll put it that way, it was loose. This year, yeah, I think some of you guys will say, you go to the teachers, there are kids giving teachers weekly pink eligibility cards, that the teacher has to say whether they're passing that week or not, and that determines their eligibility for the following week. And to be academically eligible, you can't be failing two or less classes, two or more classes, rather. So they have a week to get that corrected, and then it's week to week to week at the five-week mark. The goal is, if you put five weeks worth of passing work together, you should be passing the class at the end of the quarter, or the next five weeks. So this has been a big initiative with the department this year, and I'm proud of the work that we've done there. Oh, wait, I shouldn't have done that. Our athletic trainers, this was added last year, we added one and a half, and they've been great. So thank you for supporting that to the board. Karen and Rachel have come in and they've made an immediate impact in terms of getting our kids ready, treatments, rehabbing. They've been wonderful. Next year, I have recommended a strength and conditioning coach. This would be somebody that would work with our kids predominantly out of season, but also in-season. In-season may be more with, working with the coaches. A lot of times, what we see in high school athletics is, kids train in the off-season, and then the season starts, and then a lot of that training kind of dips. So they start the season stronger than they finish the season. Well, we want to fix that. We want somebody that's going to come in, who has an extensive knowledge in movement-based exercises, activities, that will hopefully prevent injuries from happening. But if a kid is in good shape, and injuries are always going to happen, the hope is that now that strength and conditioning coach will work with the athletic trainers to even speed up that recovery process and get our kids back on the field quicker, but also when they're ready. Next, I have nutrition for athletes, and that's twofold thing. One, I want that strength and conditioning coach to help us out. This is where a lot of high schools miss the boat. We have our kids lifting, we give them the exercises, but most kids don't know what to eat before a workout. They don't know what to eat after a workout. They don't know what to eat the night before a game or the day of a game. I want this person to help educate our kids and our coaches on how to take care of your body, not just the physical part, but that nutrition part, because that's a big part of it. It really, really is. The other piece with nutrition, I've been talking to Ann Rich, and we're going to try to put something together for next year, because the reality is, we have kids that come into school at seven o'clock in the morning, that are there until four-thirty, five o'clock. And I'm not just talking about athletes. They might be kids coming in for music, staying after for music, plays, rehearsals, whatever. They don't leave till four-thirty-five, they have lunch at nine-thirty in the morning, some of them. We're out of school at one forty-one. Is there a program that we can take advantage of, where we can open the cafeteria lines at one forty-five for fifteen minutes to put something in these kids' bodies that's not from the vending machine? Where, you know, the hope is, well, there's a lot of kids, I'm hoping they're getting a granola bar and a Gatorade, but who knows? They might be eating Doritos before practice, and that's clearly not good. So like, we're trying to develop the total athlete, and that is what's going to get our kids to the next level, in my opinion. The Under Armour B S N partnership that I know you're aware of, for uniforms and equipment, if we take advantage of this, we'll be able to purchase things at forty percent off a retail price, plus we'll get six percent rewards money back. Just as an example, if we were part of that this year, and they're keeping track as well, I could have bought a full set of volleyball uniforms at no cost for our district for next year. Like, top end Under Armour uniforms. So the purchasing power that that would give me would just be enhanced for the district. And again, our kids will look a certain way, you know, you look good, you feel good, feel good, you play good. So we want our kids to have that look. And campus branding that comes with that. They give us money for branding. So you'll walk in to, back to our stadiums, you'll see Frontier Falcon flags up on the light poles. You'll walk in, you'll see more of these kind of mats, you'll see more window decals and logos. We're going to look the part. And not just as, you know, a high school, we're going to look pretty similar to maybe a small college. That's the goal.
Get the, you said it was being followed right now, you guys are monitoring what we're spending?
Well, B S N is, they've actually honored, even though we haven't signed the agreement yet, they've honored the price points that come with that, with the anticipation that we're going to sign the paperwork. So we're hopeful. We're not, and I've made it clear to them, it's not guaranteed, but we're hopeful.
I just remember back to the facilities meeting, I think B S N wanted forty-five thousand dollars for a pitching mound. Last year, remember the portable mound?
I don't know if that was B S N.
It was.
But here's the thing, we would get a discounted rate, so that forty-five thousand dollars, and I'm not going to do the math, because I can't do it.
No, I know.
We would then get six percent rewards money back on top of that. So, you know, there's a win-win there. The last thing I have on there is Frontier will have a leadership role within E C I C and Section Six. And that's kind of more like geared towards me. So last year and this year, I represented the E C I C League on a committee that rewrote the Section Six Constitution and bylaws. So Frontier's having a say in that. Next year in E C I C, now, I don't know if many people know this, E C I C, the Erie County Interscholastic Conference, we are the largest league, not in Section Six, Erie County, we're the largest athletic league in the state. We have more schools a part of that. So next year, and for two years, I will be the, I was elected as president-elect of E C I C, and two years after that, I'm president of E C I C. So like, we have a seat at the table. Like, we can kind of help steer the narrative, if you will, and lead the way. Some interesting data, why am I not moving?
Question on that before you move.
Yeah.
So with the new field coming online this summer, all the games that could be happening at one time, is one point five athletic trainers enough?
Well, I'll wait for that. Move too fast, I mean. Right now, one point five athletic trainers is enough. Once we have all that going on, that's a conversation we're going to have to have and revisit. Okay.
So when we're at the fields now, so let's just say like last week when you had, like you had, looked like maybe J V girls lacrosse on the grass field, and you had another varsity game on the,
Yeah.
in the stadium. And then I think you had maybe J V volleyball, or softball, or baseball, or softball, maybe varsity. You had like four different games, and it was just non-stop.
It's non-stop, yeah. So those days, you're asking how we cover that?
Yeah.
Very carefully. We have typically, I'll have one of the trainers at the baseball and softball, because they're so close, that they can kind of go back and forth. I'll have one at the stadium, like today, we had a baseball game, softball game, flag football at the stadium. Karen was at the stadium, and Rachel was at the varsity baseball and softball games, just kind of going back and forth. The coaches all have their phone numbers, so if there's an incident, they're right there, they have the gator, they can get places pretty quickly. Where we do run into problems, where there's also nights like that, but we also have multiple things going on at the middle school.
Right.
That sometimes is a challenge, because, you know, the middle school's a good ten-minute drive away. So that's a challenge for us, for sure.
What days do you have the half?
I'm sorry?
On what days does the half work? How do you break that up?
Well, we look at the schedule and they break it up. There are times where, you know, for example, Rachel might come in, she's our full-time. She might come in at, you know, twelve-thirty, one o'clock and stay to the end. And then Rachel might come in at five o'clock, right at game time, and kind of cover that way. But there's also days that maybe Rachel or Karen will come in the full-time and help cover some things, and the next day is only there to help prep before a game, and then she'll leave and Karen will cover. They work it out, okay? I'll try to go fast, because I know we just got sidetracked and time is an issue. Some data here, and again, thank you to Carrie Amici, she helped pull this for me. And this data is available because of the rosters being in e-school. I asked her to pull the average GPA, attendance rate, and suspension rate for every high school student, non-athletes and athletes. And then we broke it down between J V and varsity combined and varsity. No real surprise, but our athletes have a higher GPA than the average high school student. Right there, while I'll take from tonight. This thing doesn't want to move. And then it's going to go too fast. Shannon, help? Oh, okay, here we go. Just real quick in conclusion, we are providing quality programs led by quality coaches, and I'm not even going to try to go back, I'm just going to leave it. Frontier athletes, like I said, get better grades, are at school more, get in less trouble. Our athletes are successful on and off the court, or playing field. And Frontier will lead the way and set the standard for Western New York high school athletics. That's the goal, folks, and that's what we're working towards, and that's what we come in to work every day for. Questions?
Questions?
I'm sure I went long, I hope I didn't go too long.
Oh, you were fine. Just a couple things.
Yeah.
If you had all the money in the world.
Okay, now we're playing.
Mr. McDowell isn't listening to this. What other sports would you want to see at Frontier?
Well, okay, that's an interesting question, because right now, I should know, flag football, girls' flag football is kind of on the rise. Right now, most schools have varsity only. There is discussion that they want to expand that, and what they probably would do is go to a modified A model, which is seventh, eighth, ninth grade modified, and then the varsity would be ten, eleven, twelve, for the most part. That got recommended to the E C I C athletic directors very late in the game. Most schools have already had their budgets in place, and a lot of the schools were like, we, it's not a lot of money, but we're laying off teachers, and the optics of us laying off a teacher and then adding a program would be terrible. We're really not in that financial crunch here. We seem to be in much better fiscal shape than most, so thank you, Mr. McDowell, and thank you to the board for leading us there. So that would be something I would want to add. The other thing that really is growing across the state, believe it or not, is girls' wrestling. Girls' wrestling is growing significantly. And there are schools, like, we had girls on our wrestling team this year, they were considered mixed competition, where they could practice with the boys, they could compete against boys, but they also went to a lot of girls-only tournaments. We can do that right now, but at some point, I think twenty-twenty-five, E C I C is eyeing that up as a, as our target date to have girls-only wrestling. Which, if that happens, I think it would be a lot like girls' hockey, where schools would merge to create one team. And I know I've had conversations with the A D at Orchard Park and Hamburg and Lake Shore, you know, similar to hockey, that maybe that would be the direction we would go with that. But that's something. I did have a conversation with Mr. Switek about possibly adding another assistant wrestling coach this year, because the reality is, like, we have two varsity coaches and a modified coach, and there may be a varsity tournament at Kenmore West High School. But then there's a girls-only tournament at Springville. We want to accommodate both of that, but you can't send just one coach to a tournament, because it holds up multiple mats going at once. So like, that would be something that would be amazing for us. You know, right now, those would be really the only things that we're looking to add. Unified world, there's talk of adding more sports for that, like unified, you know, bocce or indoor soccer. If those things come through fruition, then absolutely, we would want to jump on board for that.
I've heard that in the past, we haven't had field hockey due to the limited space with all the teams that would use it. We have a second full field going in.
We have a second full field going in that currently isn't planned to be strict for field hockey. So if that's something we want, we have to move quickly.
Just asking, so.
I will say this, in the last two years, I really haven't, nobody, I've gotten emails from two parents about it in two years. So is the interest really there? I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I haven't been pressured on it, though.
Some of the other schools have rugby.
Rugby's a club sport. So they use a school name, but they're not affiliated with the district or New York State Public High School Athletic Association. It's kind of like, here at Frontier, we have our varsity hockey, and then there's J V and modified, but those aren't our teams. Like, parents email me, when does Modified Hockey start? And I said, Modified Hockey's not a team that is sponsored by Frontier School. Here's the name, and email the person you need to contact. And that's not just us, that's across Section Six.
The other thing, Greg, I know the Under Armour.
Yep.
Is something that we've been talking about, and we're going to continue that conversation with Mr. McDowell and Mr. Switek. But just for the record, this would be uniforms for modified J V and varsity. So all our kids would, we wouldn't do the hand-me-downs.
It wouldn't, well, there's no way we would be able to try to purchase brand-new uniforms for every team in one year. Mr. McDowell would have a heart attack, and I don't know where the A D is, so I don't want that to happen.
It's right out there near his office.
Okay, all right. It's financially not feasible to say, we're going to buy all new uniforms for everybody every year.
Eventually.
So there would be initially some trickle-down, until we could get into a place where, it would probably take three or four years, realistically.
But that would be a goal, right?
That absolutely is a goal.
What is the resume, what are we, I guess, what is the cycle now?
There is a rotation, it depends on the sport. There is a rotation, it depends on the sport. Like contact sports, you know, things like, you know, football uniforms, you get three seasons out of them, you've done great. Other contact sports, with boys basketball, even soccer a little bit, you're talking about like four years. Certain things, like a track uniform, we, we could probably get five years out of it. It, it depends on the sport.
So it's like, so like, does the uniform say, like, let's just say football. Is it a varsity level for three years, then it goes to JV for two years, and does it go to Modified for?
That's kind of been the case, the, the caveat there is, you really can't take a varsity uniform and trickle it down to Modified.
No.
Because the kids would be looking like they're wearing their uncle's suit, you know, and just be hanging off of them. So like, that's, that's not feasible, so, and, and I'll tell you, football uniforms are not cheap. Like, so that, that's something that we, we do the best we can to fill in, and I know that there's some issues at the Modified level that we are working to address, and I, I meet with our BSN rep like every other month right now, but we already have on our calendar monthly meetings to discuss things moving into next year, with the hopes that, that this takes off, because then our needs, you know, like I said, that purchasing power, like, okay, this is what I gotta buy, well, jeez, now I got this money, now, where can I do some of those fill-ins? You know, and just to kind of speak to it, like, I might put a varsity team in an Under Armour uniform, the Modified team might get a BSN uniform, which is still, we have varsity teams that wear them right now. You wouldn't be able to tell the difference. They're, they look sharp, and they're nice, and they're quality.
Well, I worry about the Modified kids, because you really want them to continue in a sport.
Right.
They have to feel good about how they look.
And, and where they play.
Right.
We, we try to get them up onto our turf fields as much as we can, when those fields are available. If, if there's a day that the Modified softball team is supposed to play at the middle school, and nobody's on the turf, they're gonna play on the turf. Same with baseball, same with, with lacrosse. Because we, we want them to see what we have to offer. This is what we have here at Frontier, go find me a private school that has what we have. You, you're not gonna be able to do it. So yes, we want them to see that at that age.
Great. Well, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me, and I, I appreciate your time, I think I went a little over. Sorry, but I appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to our committee reports. Advocacy is number one, so go to Mr. Pedkowski.
We haven't had a Frontier advocacy meeting since my last report, and we did cancel our last meeting for the year. As you know, the budget did pass, the state budget, and, you know, turned out a little bit better than we first anticipated. And just a reminder that July 12th is the deadline to submit a NISBA resolution. At the last ECASB meeting, there was some districts that were talking about co-sponsoring a bill related to the electric buses. But, you know, with that being the last ECASB meeting, there wasn't any, you know, there, we knew that we couldn't have an official ES, ECASB, you know, all joining together there, but there might be some more information on that coming. That's all I have for advocacy.
Thank you. Audit, Mr. Voto.
Our next meeting is June 11th.
Okay, nothing else for tonight?
Nothing else.
Okay. Facilities, Mr. Diplock.
Yes, we actually met on April 23rd over at the middle school. So middle school right now is at 65%, correct, Rob? With the pool, and we just started on the tackling and everything like that. Trying to arrange with Chris so we can get the board to walk through the pool. I don't think if anyone's actually ever saw a person get the flag, they did the tile and all the tile work, it's just, it's pretty impressive. So the multi-purpose at the high school will be in August, it turned over in August. The lights will be up in August as well, and then Rob was meeting with campus on a few other things as well for the Capitol project over at the high school, senior center. We did go over that, there was some talk of, you know, parking, additional parking, stuff like that. And then we're still looking to take that over, I think in July, correct? Yeah. Capitol project, just a roof on a small gym, and that's at the middle school, right? And then we did get the Dastney grant, and we're doing clay courts and pickleball, and that was at Blaze.
Blaze.
Blaze, yes, so. Just also got the financials moved over from, actually, I just formed them to trustee Killpoint and yourself, Manny, to the Finance and Budget Committee, and just to see where we're at with change orders and fiscally on the project.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to Finance and Budget, Mr. Killpoint.
Thank you to Mr. McDowell, he makes my life easy in, in April and May with his presentations. I just, again, can't stress enough the importance of getting out the vote on, on May 21st here at FAC. A lot of great things have been happening in this district, and I hope to see him continue for years to come.
IDA, Mr. Pedkowski.
Hi, Doctor Newell, our next meeting's smileboard.
Okay. Safe schools, Mr. Boyle.
Nothing new, no effort.
Okay, student achievement, Mr. Voto.
We met this afternoon, and we received an update on the reading programs that the school district is considering for next year. We also talked about chronic absenteeism, and with possibility, courses of action in the future for school years to follow.
Very good, thank you. Student knows, Nathan.
Uh, the high school's in full AP test mode, so we're on lockdown there. And then we had a successful J-ball last week, and prom ticket sales end this week. And we have our next meeting tomorrow.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, that will take us to 9.1. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following. Abolish one account clerk typist and create a senior account clerk typist. Abolish a grounds worker and create a maintenance mechanic. Abolish a clerk typist and create an account clerk typist. Abolish the Assistant Director of Operational Services and create the Director of Employee Engagement and Human Resources. And create a principal account clerk. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Killpoint, second?
Second.
Mr. Cordier, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that will take us to 9.3. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts the resignations for retirement of Diane Boss, Benjamin Kaiser, and Judith Mulaney. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Boyle, second? Mr. Voto, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
And we wish them all well and have a happy and wonderful retirement. Okay, yeah, we'll take us to 9.8. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education appoints the following co-directors of the 2024 summer school programs. James Kelmicki and Adam Rivers will be co-directors at the secondary program at the high school. Christopher Thumann and John Rosinski will be co-directors of the middle school secondary program. And Julia Birmingham and Allison Otwell will be the elementary co-directors. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Killpoint, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question?
Only to say that, um, thank you to the administration, we were a little heavy last year, and we're down by about a third, so I hope it works well, thank you.
And this will all depend on enrollment as well, so. That takes us to 9.9.
With the vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Carried. 9.9. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education appoints Catherine Bone, teacher on special assignment at the middle school, effective 7/1/24 through 6/30/25, with no change in salary benefits or seniority, as per the memorandum of agreement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Pedkowski, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 9.10. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following individual is appointed to a teaching position, salary in accordance with the District FCTA contract. This recommended appointment has fingerprinting clearance from the New York State Education Department, Office of School Personnel Review and Accountability, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of the Education Law 2509, 2573, 3212, and 3014. In order to be granted tenure, the classroom teacher shall have received composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to education law 3012C and/or 3012D. Philip Ciccarelli will be a mathematics teacher, grade 7 through 12, at our middle school. And the effective date is July 1st, 2024 through 6/30/2028. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I think we all moved on that one. So I will just put down Mr. Cordier, Mr. Killpoint, and Mr. Diplock was in there as well.
I forgot, I forgot what that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Bill, would you come forward? While you're here, would you introduce who you brought with us this evening?
Yes, I have my father, Dave, my mother, Elma, and then my older brother, Nick, who is a Frontier alum.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
9.11. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education appoints the following individuals to a support staff position. Salary in accordance with the current District of CEA collective bargaining agreement and salary schedule. Further, unless noted, these recommended appointments have fingerprint clearance from the New York State Education Department and Office of School Review and Accountability. Lynn Pfeifer will be a food service helper at the high school. Kimberly Nasca will also be a food service helper at Blaisdell. Tracy Garrison will be a senior clerk, senior account clerk typist at, here at the district office. And on the next page, we have Ethan Switek will be a grounds worker throughout the district. Amanda Timm will be a teacher aide at the middle school. Anthony DeRusso will be a bus attendant at Transportation. Presley Schlitz will be a grounds worker. And may I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Killpoint, second?
Second.
Mr. Cordier, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, and I believe Tracy is with us this evening, if you would come forward. Congratulations, and here's your Frontier phone. 9.16. Resolved that the Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement and the funding for the agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and the Frontier Central Teachers Association, as per the attached. Further, the Superintendent of Schools is authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the entire Board of Education. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Diplock, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 10.1. Strategic plan update. Ms. Dugan.
Yes, so Panorama, our SEL screening tool, that survey was completed. So we're compiling the results now, so we're happy that that got completed. With our directors for summer school in place now, starting this week, we get really down into the planning of it. We're gonna be at Big Tree in the high school complex, keep everything there, make it central. There's other things going on in other buildings, so everything will be there, including E&amp;L camp, the Bosse's related services, elementary, middle, and high school, so more information to come. Our academic preview that was scheduled for tomorrow night has, for current university, we are sending it out for June 6th, it's gonna be a virtual parent university in combination with our summer learning programs. We thought it would be a good way to combine both of those. So the one for tomorrow night has been canceled, but it will be held on June 6th, and also will be recorded. We just, the first administration of the New York State Science Assessment on the CBT, computer-based testing for grades 5 and 8, that goes along with our updated standards and three-dimensional nature of science. So that was just completed. Let's see, we had Frontier students in grade 7 and 12, this was out in the Falcon update. They can sign up for virtual tutoring sessions with students from the University of Buffalo. And Frontier is one of a few of Western New York schools who got accepted into this pilot program, so we're really excited about that. And finally, our Reading Program Committee members are in the process of rank ordering the programs. And then the top three will be ordered to pilot beginning next year. And that's headed up by Mrs. Danza.
Very good, thank you. Okay, that takes us to 11.10. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board, the Board of Education accepts the business management reports, 11.1 through 11.10. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Diplock, second? Second, Mr. Voto, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 12.1. Back to Ms. Dugan, as our acting superintendent, update us, please.
Yes, so one thing that Mr. Switek wanted to reiterate tonight was the great write-up we got in the Hamburg Sun. We had three articles submitted by our PR person, Bill Bruton, and they really, they really stand out because it just shows what Frontier is all about. The first was that our school district was honored with the 2024 Best Communities for Music Education Award from the National Association of Music Merchants, but it's the 13th time Frontier has received this award. So that is standout, and we're very proud of our music program. With respect to that, our Frontier teacher, Mary Kay Ordolano, a music teacher, she has earned the prestigious Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra and Erie County Music Educators Association Award for Excellence in Music Education. And then finally, the last article was on the NASA Hunch Program and our 11 students who attended that. And so those are three really distinct things that we have in our district that we are really proud of, and great that Bill Bruton is getting the word out there of how great we are. So, other than that, we have lots of things happening in May and June, as you know, it's a very busy time. Festival of Arts in different buildings, we have concerts going on in all of the buildings, we have the High School National Honor Society on May 16th, an art show at the high school on the 17th, we have athletic awards on May 23rd, so it's a busy place the next couple of months. And just again, thank you to our teachers, I know Mr. Switek wanted to say that as well, he could not be here, and also that he is very, very proud of our top 10 students, and of course, all of our students, but he just wanted to extend his appreciation to the families and the community for that. And then just another reminder to, to get out and vote Tuesday, May 21st, at the FAC Center from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Thank you. 12.2, Board Policy First Reading. Now, we've had this policy before, but there was a change in the title of the person who oversees it. That's why we're voting again, and it will go right into practice, we won't have to go to a second reading. Resolved that the Board of Education waives the second reading and adopts Policy 6190, Workplace Violence Prevention Policy Statement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Killpoint, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Opposed? Carried. 12.3. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon a second reading, adopts the following policies. 7530, child abuse in male treatment. 7631, appointment and training of committee on special education to the CSE and the Subcommittee on Special Education Members. And 7632, appointment and training of committee on preschool special education, CPSE members. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Diblock, second? Mr. Boyle, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that will take us to roundtable. Mr. Diblock. Mr. Boyle.
When I was, I was saying congratulations, good luck to the top 10, I was thinking like, these students don't need luck, they've done all the work, so really great job, they're going to, they're going to do wonderful out there. I mean, thank you to all the teachers and welcome to our new place, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Podkowski.
I echo what Mr. Boyle said, and I did just want to thank this current board for putting your trust in me this year with the appointment, and I thank my family for their support through another year. And just best wishes to the future board and the entire Frontier Central School District. Remember to always put the students' best interests first, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Voto.
Special thanks to Mr. Podkowski for stepping in this year and serving with us, we really appreciate you doing that. I'd like to thank again Mr. McDowell and the Budget and Finance Committee for coming through with a really, a very good budget that we can all believe in. Congrats to the top 10, but also congrats to all the students at Frontier High School. We seem to be moving in a very positive direction.
Thank you. Mr. Killcoin.
As always, congratulations to our new hires and happy retirement to all of our retirees. The top 10, spectacular, great numbers. I also want to just take a minute and congratulate all of our graduating seniors. It's no small achievement, the top 10 stand out, but for all of those that will get the diploma this year, great job. Again, the budget vote, can't say this enough, May 21st, please make an effort to come out and, and, and support or cast your vote. Teacher Appreciation Week, that one hits home pretty close, with my wife Shannon and my son Brennan. Brennan finished his first year, and my wife, I want to stay married, so she's got many years. Thank you to all teachers. Marian and I were able to attend the Music Educators Award at the BPO for Mary Kay Ordolano. Just well-deserved. Todd Makin was able to present her with her award, it was a great evening, incredible music. Just, we got a fantastic music program. The alumni had their first baseball game here, they came back, and that was a great event, so congratulations to our baseball team. And I did hear through that the junior ball was a huge success at Michael's, so great job, everybody, thank you.
Mr. Cordier.
I don't think there's too much left to say. Thanks, Mr. Killcoin, that was perfect, I'll just pass it on to you.
Okay, I need to go on to Ms. Dugan.
Thank you to Davis Barnes for us.
Yes, I want to start with that as well. Davis, you really helped us by keeping continuity with the board, and we're going to miss you, but we do have a little something for you, I'll have Ms. Dugan give that to you. Thank you so much for your support, and always be at a Falcon. Going back to what Mr. Killcoin said, the Philharmonic presentation for Mary Kay, not only was it well-deserved, it was so, so moving, because you could tell by the audience, most of whom are music educators, that they really saw all of the things that she has done over the years to help students get to where they are. And it all starts at the elementary level with our teachers there, through middle school and high school. At this time of the year, we always kind of focus on the high school, but they don't get there in a heartbeat. It takes everybody working along the line from pre-K all the way to 12 to make those kids get that diploma and walk across the stage, and it's a very special time. So I want to thank everyone for all of their efforts, and thank you for all coming tonight. And can, and Mr. McDowell, thank you for all the hard work on the budget. I know that doesn't happen overnight either. You've taken us from point A all the way to Z, and hopefully we will see the results of all your work as the years go by. So at this moment, could I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Diblock, second? Mr. Cordier, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you and good evening, students, if you need to have your papers signed, Ms. Dugan will do that.